In session, all three commissioners are present. We are here today to conduct our weekly open business meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. If I could get you to introduce yourself so we could have you for the record, starting over here.
Stojkovic with Ada County Operations.
Josh Brown, Ada County Operations.
Alex Murray, Ada County Operations.
John Blake, Paramedics.
Alvin Johnson, Juvenile Services.
Herb Cantu, Liveville.
Robin Zwaney, Procurement.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Bob Carney, Operations.
Don Carlisle, Forlow Idaho Offroad.
Melanie Bennett, Juvenile Services.
Jessica Tolman, Juvenile Services.
Allison Tate, Juvenile Services.
Two IT guys.
Heath Roborty with the Clerk's Office.
Elizabeth Ellington, Procurement.
Beth Moll, Treasurer.
Thank you. Thank you. We are first up is employee recognition. Is Melanie here? Oh, there you are. Okay. Yeah, you're here. Okay. Let me see, you were second traffic.
I was.
Can't imagine that.
I hate it.
Can't imagine that. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Daley to read the recognition and then we'll proceed from there.
Melanie Bennett, 20 years of service to Ada County. Very good, in a very important field. Melanie Bennett has dedicated 20-plus years of service to Ada County Juvenile Services. She initiated, initially started her time as an intern in the Juvenile Diversion Program in 2003 and 2004. Melanie was originally hired at the Juvenile Detention Facility in April 2004, then transitioned to juvenile probation in June 2004. Melanie has worked several different positions as a juvenile probation officer to include court investigations, field, sex crimes unit, female unit, status offense caseload, and diversion. Melanie was promoted to a probation officer three in March 2018. She has taken on numerous special duties to include supervising many college interns, being a trainer in our new employee orientation program, as well as field training officer for many years. Melanie is a project leader of the law-related education program and plays a vital role in communicating with elementary and middle schools in Boise and West Ada School Districts. This allows us to present the prevention curriculum and law-related education to students. Melanie is responsible for developing and updating the curriculum using best practices as well as recruiting probation officers as facilitators. During the 2022 and 2023 school year, Melanie and five other probation facilitators delivered 65 presentations, reaching a total of 1,829 students. Very good. That work is important to make sure we keep our kids out of the system. Outside of work, Melanie enjoys time with her husband, their two adult daughters, their two teenage, teen and pre-teen sons, and their three-year-old grandbaby. Melanie adores being a grandmother and travels to Minnesota to visit her daughter and grandbaby whenever possible. Melanie also loves walking her two dogs, reading books, playing the piano and violin. Melanie is a great representative of the good work being done at Ada County Juvenile Services. Thank you, Melanie, and congratulations on 20 years of service. 20 years of service in this area has to be gigantic credit. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you, Melanie. Do we have anybody from the department who would say anything?
Oh, you do.
I always want to talk to you.
Yes.
Good morning. We were here yesterday presenting data to you.
You were.
You know, we've lots of data sheets and we're always talking to you about statistics, but what we didn't talk to you about yesterday is the faces behind the statistics, and Melanie's such a good example of that, so we're happy to be here with her this morning, that the reason we can tell you about all the good outcomes that we're seeing is because we have people like Melanie that work so hard, take on best practices, and really want to get good outcomes for youth and families. So, thank you, Melanie, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to say anything from the department? Thank you, Melanie, for your free service. If you want to, we'll step up here, we'll give this to you, and we can take a picture. Okay. We got IT guy, you gonna take a picture?
Congratulations.
Yeah, well, congratulations, Melanie. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. On behalf of the citizens of Ada County, we present this recognition to you. Congratulations for your long, 20 years of service.
Hang on. Okay. One, two, three. Do a couple more. Smile.
Okay. Thank you. If you want to have any...
Yes.
Yes, congratulations. Appreciate the service.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Yes.
Congratulations.
All right, we have some unfinished business. I'll accept the motion to take the unfinished business off table.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, on RFP 24037 Expo Idaho Venue Management Software, the evaluation team has completed their evaluation of the proposals submitted, and we'd like to submit this letter with the evaluation team's recommendation for your consideration. Would you like me to read that? Yes, read the letter. All right. So, "To the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement, dear members of the Board, the evaluation team for RFP 24037 has completed the evaluations of the three proposals submitted for this project. Unfortunately, none of the proposals fully met the scope of work outlined in the RFP. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to reject the proposals submitted." Okay. All right. Any discussions from the board? All right, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to reject the proposals submitted for RFP 24037 Expo Idaho Venue Management Software due to non-compliance with...
They did not meet the scope of work.
Due to non-compliance with the, related to the scope of work requirements. Period.
I second the, I second the motion.
All right. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll do new business. I'll open the public hearing on agreement number 13927-1-24, notice of termination of development agreement number 13927 governing development of Bison Northwest LLC. Do we have any public discussion on that agreement? We don't? Do we have any other discussion from the board? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on agreement number 13927-1-24 and call for a motion.
I move to approve agreement number 13927-1-24 as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have, in operations, we have change order number one, Ada County Trial Court Administrative Treatment Center, tenant improvement agreement number 15465, increase to $200,000. Is there anybody from operations who wants to speak to that?
Chair, I'm...
Okay, go ahead.
...in recognition, yep. So, this was, again, the additional bathrooms that we wanted to add to the facility in Elter. As you know, when we originally designed this job, the bidding environment required us to kind of go to the minimums that were in the design specifications, and now, looking back, we can add these bathrooms that would help them, you know, deal with all the different people that come there during the day. I think the design really doesn't allow for, you know, three hundred floor people to use and share with two bathrooms that they have. So, by adding the bathrooms, we kind of give this group the opportunity.
All right. Any questions? All right.
And now's the time to do that, not later.
Yes, now or, yeah, later will be even more costly.
They wouldn't use porta potties.
Could do that. Could do that. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's funny. All right. Okay, well, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the change order number one, Ada County Trial Court Adminstrating, Administration Treatment Center, tenant improvement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Yeah, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have now procurement again. Yes. Okay, go ahead. Opening of RFP 24033, Ada County Sheriff's Office Jail RFID inmate tracking system. Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received five proposals for RFP 24033. I think Robin's got our Bonfire E Procurement System queued up on the screen if you'd like us to open those.
I'd like you to.
And just so everyone's aware, this project is to help find a solution for the advanced tracking of inmates in the jail. The RFID solution will help enhance monitoring, management, and security of the inmates at the Ada County Jail. Yeah, they've been looking at that for a while, haven't they? Yeah. And so, on this one, being an RFP, we'll just need you to, well, we can read the name of the proposer. Read the name of the proposer and the date you'd like to reconsider it or consider it. All right. So, first up is Axial Corporation, Autonomy Today LLC, Cadmus, DI Group, Guardian RFID, and then Timekeeping Systems, Inc. And, Mr. Chairman, the evaluation team will need time to evaluate these proposals, and we request that this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the May 7th, 2024 Open Business Meeting. Okay, any question or discussion from the board? Okay, hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to table the final ranking and award recommendation for RFP 24033, Ada County Sheriff's Office Jail RFID inmate tracking system to May 7th, 2024.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Now, the review of bids received and award recommendation for Public Works $50,000 to $200,000. Go ahead. All right. So, this one is for bid 24038, the Ada County Public Safety Building Programs Office Remodel 2024. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received eight responses for bid 24038 and would like to submit this letter of the bids received and a recommendation for award for your consideration. Okay, go ahead. Read the letter, yes. All right. So, "To Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement, dear members of the Board, the Ada County Procurement received eight responses for bid 24038. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amount submitted. One is ACM Alpine Construction Management LLC in the amount of $266,114.70. Number two is Beal Corporation in the amount of $179,900. Number three is Brycon Inc. in the amount of $186,500. Number four is Excelsior Construction Company in the amount of $152,900. Number five is Kreisenbeck LLC, DBA Kreisenbeck Constructors in the amount of $176,017. Number six is Radix Construction. They were found non-responsive on this one. Number seven, Scott Hedrick Construction, Inc. in the amount of $174,446. And then, number eight, Straff General LLC in the amount of $178,669. After reviewing the bids submitted, it's the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid 24038 to Excelsior Construction Company as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $152,900." Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to award bid 24038, Ada County Public Safety Building Programs Office Remodel 2024 to Excelsior Construction Company in the amount of $152,900.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to award bid 24038, Ada County Public Safety Building Programs Office Remodel 2024 to Excelsior Construction Company in the amount of $152,900.
I second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We have, now we have before us RFP 24044. All right. Last but not least. So, yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the evaluation team for RFP 24044 has completed the evaluation of the sole proposal submitted. We'd like to submit this letter with the evaluation team's recommendation for your consideration. Okay, read the letter. All right. So, "To the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement, dear members of the Board, the evaluation team for RFP 24044 has completed the evaluation of the sole proposal submitted for this project. Unfortunately, the proposal came in over budget. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to reject the proposal submitted by Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., and to procure on the open market." Okay, any questions or discussion? Yeah, I guess I'll ask...
You got, go, go, go. Yeah, question. So, what, can you, maybe it's for Richard, but what are we looking for in a historical preservation plan, and who do you go to hire for that, and how come this one came into over budget, and what else is out there?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, yeah, we're looking for consultants who can help us just draft a, a planning document to guide the Historic Preservation Council as they seek to bring on projects and undertake efforts to help recognize and support and sustain our historic preservation, I guess, resources that we have in the county. In this case, I think we did have a couple local, I guess, consultants that we've seen do these plans in the past that did not submit to a proposal, so that's somebody that we can reach out to directly to see. We may also reach out to the proposer, see if there's any pencil sharpening that can take place as well. But, again, it's a planning document, just primarily looking for a consultant who has historic preservation background and worked with the National Historic Trust.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to reject the sole proposal for RFP 24044, Ada County Historic Preservation Plan, for being over budget and instruct the staff to procure on the open market.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have licenses. We have 12 catering permits, two new licenses, one license transfer, and some renewals. Any question or discussion on any of the licenses? No, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including 12 counter permits, two new licenses, one license transfer, and 72 license reviews, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we are fortunate to have a Clerk's Office here with us today.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Ace.
Couple of other things for us, Chairman and Commissioners, all focused on change. We've got a lot of change coming our way, and I don't say that lightly. But, for starters, we've got, later on in today's agenda, there's an agreement with the contractor, or consulted work with an architecture, we're designing a wall that will go in the current space that, that Bob's team is occupying, the ops admin, that's part of the spatial swap, so we'll move our indigent service team, swap over with Bob's team. It alleviates a lot of the spatial pressure that he's dealing with now. So, that move is, is coming closer and closer. We've also got the front counter remodel. We've certainly got the elections and the RRC remodel project going on. Not to mention, we've got two pretty big software projects. So, one is our Recorder's Office. They're going to partake on moving away from the Helion system they've been using for years, and they'll bring on the Tyler technology. We're really excited about that project. And then, our indigent services, I'm not sure how they've been doing it, but they've been using that indigent service application that we built back in 1985. So, we'll be transitioning to an on-base platform. We spend a lot of time making sure it's the solution for us. We've worked with, with our Treasurer's Team, looking at some of the report functionalities that are within there, and we've got our project manager, we've just had our kickoff meeting, and a lot of big things to come on that as well. And then, for fun in the office, it's also spring, so we're going to do our step challenge, and that's where there'll be a Team Trent, a Team Katie, and a Team Heat. We bring on team members, we track steps for one month, so we'll have some good, healthy trash talk and competition in the office and good time for it. So, lots of change in our area.
Who keeps track of the steps?
Self-reported. Good question, Chairman. Self-reported, but it is the good old honor system.
All right. All right. Well, good. Anything else?
That's it.
All right.
So, that's why we'll see a lot of people walking around.
We're gonna... I'm hoping you see a lot of Team Heath people walking around.
Are they gonna have the badge on or anything?
Yeah, a team badge.
Team Heath?
Figure out some healthy incident.
All right. All right, well, thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, well, thanks. Okay, next up is a claims journal where we pay our bills. Is there any question or discussion on any of the claims? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to authorize payment of the claims on claims journal dated April 12, 2024.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We have personnel actions. I'll accept the motion on personnel actions.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
I second the motion.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have anyone here from the assessor's office? Nope. Well, we have, only here from the assessor's office, they have no business discussed. All right, Treasurer's Office. We are lucky to have our distinguished Treasurer, Lyda Long.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Before you for consideration are some tax cancellations. These were brought to our attention from the Idaho State Tax Commission because these parcels, they're hydro power businesses, so they're assessed by the state, so they're operating property, they're not assessed by the county assessor. The parties, these taxpayers and the tax commission, reached an agreement to reduce value, and so, as a result of that agreement, that's why these tax cancellations or adjustments are before you. They essentially overpaid, so, based on their agreement. So, those are for your consideration, and then we'll process these and make sure that the taxpayers are refunded.
Is this a recent decision regarding the irrigation, hydro?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, I, it was in the last month or two that they reached the settlement agreement.
Have they been overpaying or underpaying prior to this?
So, they, they paid at the higher value, the, I guess, initially assessed value for the year stated on the agenda, and so then, as part of this agreement, they just, they reduced the value for those years.
What about all the subsequent years? What have they been doing?
Oh, well, 23 is on here.
Well, like, the last 20 years, or has it been just going through the county instead of the state, or?
Oh, I'm, I'm assuming because they were centrally assessed, they've been through the state, but I'm not certain.
Any other questions?
Because the state does the assessment, correct?
Correct. So, the estate assesses operating property.
Right. And so, we, we just implement it based on what the state calculation is?
Correct. We use the state's value, and then, we bill based on the levies, and we collect and distribute to the taxing districts like any other parcels then.
That's why it was their decision to change it. They, they meaning the state's decision to change it.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions? Well, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes two tax cancellations for 2021, three tax cancellations for 2022, three tax cancellations for 2023, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay. We should note that the tax cancellations is more of an adjustment than it is an act, it's not a cancellation, a total of tax, it's just an adjustment. All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
And as another clarification, this was the state doing it.
Correct. It was an agreement between the state and the taxpayer.
All right. Okay, next up, we have a fee waiver, a request for a low in Casey's Smile Suicide Awareness Community Cleanup for the Oregon Trail and Pleasant Valley. Herb here's gonna tell us about it.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Yes, there is a nonprofit group known as Casey Smiles, Inc., or Casey Smiles Suicide Awareness Group. They are partnering with a team called Forlow Idaho Offroad, in which they are requesting that their disposal fee be waived. I have a couple maps here for, for reference as to the, or two locations they're referring to here. The first location is along the Oregon Trail area located east of Plexi Court, or east of Micron. It's on the page before you. You can see the orange box highlighted, and then, the second location they're proposing is on the rear, as the Pleasant Valley area, which is south of West Thompson Road. There is a orange rectangle there that they're also proposing to clean up. I do believe this is a great program. The challenge that we have is waiving disposal fees. Don't, it's not something that's common. There are many organizations out there that perform events such as this, and so, it could take precedence for other organizations to request disposal fees to be waived. So, there'll need to be a process to review and evaluate those other requests in the future to facilitate waiving disposal fees.
How much disposal, how much fee, how much disposal, what, how much material are we talking?
We don't know, we don't know the quantities at this point in time, so I would imagine, depending on how long the area's been dumped or illegally over the past X amount of time, it can be significant.
Okay. Do you know anything about the group and this activity they're doing, or?
I do not. I'm, I'm not familiar with the group or the activity. In my past experiences, there are many organizations that do cleanup events, and so, it's just, it's a matter of how the Commissioners would like to facilitate something like this. It's just, it's definitely a tricky...
So, what's your suggestion?
If we don't have any sponsored events as an agency, then I would recommend considering sponsoring events, but having some type of evaluation criteria to facilitate that before we just start initiating free disposal.
Okay.
I think, I think that's a good idea, having, having a process for review and...
Yes. And there's no process today, so it's, it's something that, I think this group has, at some point in time in the past, had a disposal fee waived, is my understanding. I don't know the exact period or duration, but this, I think, as we move forward, we need to have a process to evaluate organizational request and how we determine who gets the free disposal, if it's even appropriate to do that at all.
And then, and then bring your recommendation to the board.
Yes, and I, I think also, we should also confirm whether enterprise funds can be utilized or gifted for such a situation.
There's legal matter needs to be discussed.
Potentially, yes. Yes.
All right, what's the, the current ordinance say? Does it just broadly say the Commissioners can waive fees?
I am not privy to the current ordinance, so...
I recall, so, since I, we started in 2020, you and me, I think this has only come up maybe once or twice. I remember we had requests, I can't remember what the outcome was, if we granted it or not, but I remember similar discussion.
Okay.
Me, me, I'm interested in trying to facilitate charity to, to do work that they don't have to do, and whether that involves waiving fees or not, I think it's worth the...
It's definitely a great cause.
Yeah, good discussion.
I want to make sure we don't discredit the cause of what they're trying to do with that.
How long would it take you to come up with a recommendation?
The, the challenge is identifying what activities would warrant free disposal. Is it just cleanup events for nonprofits? I think it should be further vetted. I can have discussions with legal and verify, making sure we're following the appropriate ordinance requirements, if there's any out there, or making sure we don't inappropriately distribute enterprise funds for an activity such as this.
Okay. Maybe we could refer this to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to bat around and see if and see if they could come up with some ideas.
Well, all right, well, that'd be, that'd be fine. They're, they're just advisory, but, but, uh, that'd be fine if you want... When's the next, next meeting of that group?
Uh, twenty-fourth, I believe. Twenty-third, excuse me, of next, this month.
Well, I think we do need to set a policy, so it would...
I would agree.
Right.
Yes.
So, did you wanna say something, sir?
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm Don Carla. I'm the founder of Forlow Idaho Offroad. Been in the Treasure Valley since eighty-seven when my dad retired from the Marine Corps. I'm also the founder of Casey Smiles Suicide Awareness. I lost my son in two thousand and eighteen, a former Marine, so I built this community that we all call family, and, um, I've been wheeling in this, in Idaho for years. Um, I do a lot for Boise County. We're actually building a search and rescue rig right now. Um, all donated with local companies to help give these guys a, a rig for them to, to do. We've also, um, cleaned up seven point six miles of Grimes Creek last year, or maybe it was the year before. We do that every year for Boise County. Um, and that's actually been posted. I think we sent you guys the links on there as well. Um, all we're asking is, I mean, even minimal fees of getting something up there. We're thinking maybe two or three trailers, seven by fourteen trailer, dump, dump trailers. Um, we're gonna actually take all the metal waste. I mean, out of Oregon Trail, if you guys haven't noticed, or if you've never been there, it's, it's bad. Um, I have willed that, that thing for years, and it's just, it kills me. Um, Pleasant Valley, the same thing, all the shooters, all the people that take out refrigerators and propane tanks, and they just, it's, you drive down the road, three, four miles down the road, past the rotor tracts, and that's all you see is garbage. And, and it kills me to see this, because I've willed this, this valley, um, for many, many years, and so, um, even discounted dump fees, I mean...
Right. Well, could you work with Herb to help, to help us establish a policy? I think that'd be beneficial to us.
Policy in process, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That'd be helpful. If you'd work with Herb, and Herb and, and your group would, uh, would come up with a policy for us to consider.
Sure.
Do you have a, a date where you're scheduling to do this?
We're, we're actually, uh, it kind of based off of what, what happened today, but either way, it's going to happen.
Right.
Um, we're planning next month.
Okay.
I, like I said, we've got, there's another group that's doing Hemingway Butte right now. I think that's like in a couple weeks that they're doing that. Um, and I think they've got Carson, the other, I don't know who, who's doing it, but they're bringing out a big flatbed dump.
Well, it's not, it's not gonna take Herb that long to come up with a policy.
Right.
And he get a legal analysis. That's the other thing we need to do, so if, if, I think that'd work, but if you work with the gentleman and others, yeah, yeah.
Oh, good, good.
All right, so, uh...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess, I, I would just chime in here, is, is, this is something we need to be encouraging to people to be responsible and help, and help us clean up our community, but there does need to be a process, so if it doesn't, is it misused or whatever, so...
Yeah.
I think this is a great idea.
And we haven't had a process before, so, 'cause I, I'm with you, I don't remember one or two maybe that we've had since we've been here. One of them was to clean up the river, down here on the river. That was, it was a mess, and somebody agreed to clean it up, so...
Okay.
I would recommend maybe we could table it for April thirtieth, if that's okay with you, Commissioners?
Does that, does that work for your schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, sure.
I'll make it work.
All right, all right. Well, unless there's any further discussion, is there? Uh, I'll accept the motion. The table is to the thirtieth of April.
Commissioners?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll move to, uh, table the fee waiver request for Forlow and Casey's Smile Suicide Awareness, Community Cleanup for the Oregon Trail and Pleasant Valley areas, uh, to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I second the motion.
All right, any further discussion? I think it's a good discussion. I think we, we do need a policy, and we haven't, haven't had one, so...
Appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
All, all who's in favor, uh, you've heard the motion. Signify, but saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Well, we have Development Services with Bold Estate Subdivision.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, please present Bold Estate Subdivision as a two-lot, a residential subdivision southwest of Boise, on the west side of the Cloverdale, south of Columbia. Um, associated, six, about six-acre site with an existing home, they're creating one new, new lot. Staff has reviewed the request, finds that the applicants complied with all the applicable conditions of approval. The plat complies with county and state codes, and we recommend the board authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plat.
Okay, any discussion? Very none. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve application number two zero two three zero one zero four four dash S, Bold Estate Subdivision, and authorize the chair to sign the, and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up is approval of the minutes, jail inspection, open business meeting, and tax detail. Any question or, or discussion? Very none. I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have some interim events at Expo, nine interim events. Any question or discussion on any of the interim events? Very none. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the nine interim event agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Motion carries. We have, uh, one event at Barber Park Education and Event Center. Any question or discussion on the, on the event? Very none. I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the one Barber Park Education and Event Center agreement as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have twelve agreements. Uh, I reviewed the, uh, the agreements. Is there any question or discussion on any of the, uh, agreements?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Well, we have a couple landfill agreements, and I know I've probably been waiting a year or more to finally see a hawk chase off the birds at the landfill, so is this, is this one gonna...
This is happening.
Well, good.
Is this hawk better trained?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, agreement number fifteen six four two regarding Ada County and the Hawk Pros. This agreement is for facilitating, uh, bird abatement vector control services. Uh, that will commission on June first. Uh, the vendor, um, will be acquiring the birds along with having the birds trained for, um, those services, so we are hopeful that we will be much more successful. This vendor has a lot more experience. It appears in the previous vendor, I'm performing this service, so I think we will move in the right direction.
So the seagulls just won't laugh at him.
Yes. And there was a lot of seagulls out there yesterday, so we definitely want this service to commence very soon here.
All right, great.
Good.
All right, and then you've also got one for, uh, some landscape construction for the Outreach Center.
Yes, this is, uh, agreement number three zero zero six. This is to facilitate, uh, the landscape support for the education outreach facility. That project is in process. We are working on the design details for the exterior. Um, and then the second phase of that will be working on the interior as well. So we're hoping to start work later this year on construction for facilitating the appropriate parking and access for that facility.
Okay, all right. Well, any other question on any of these agreements?
I had a question about, um, um, indigent services remodel. So we wanna talk about what we're doing at indigent services?
Chairman and Commissioner, I can speak to that, and can lean on Josh as well. That's the, again, the indigent service team. We're going to relocate over to the admin space that Bob's team is currently occupying. Their team will move over to the indigent services team. However, we need to design a wall so that we can have our front reception lobby, and then have a security issue as well, so it'd be a badge. Folks from the public can just walk into the office space, so we designed a wall that will suit our need. Josh, if there's anything to add?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Heath summarized it perfectly. We have to create a reception area.
Right.
Um, and the permit has been submitted to City of Boise, and we're just waiting on, uh...
And this is consistent with the discussion we've had previously.
Correct. Correct, sir.
Where we're switching, your, uh, your, some of your people are moving, uh, over to the, where the, uh, or the operations is moving over to the indigent, and you're gonna, you're having...
Exactly right, Chairman.
All right, any other questions then?
Well, I had a question about the master pathway agreement with the, uh, Napa-Maredi Irrigation District. So is, is that for public paths to go along the irrigation canals, or is that just for access for...
Tom, can I answer that question?
Mr. Chairman, thi- this is agreement we've had. This is just an amendment we've, we've had for access since, I think, two thousand and two or something like that. It's a law, it's a long-term agreement. This is just, uh, an adjustment to that agreement.
And doesn't just allow the, uh, the director to make, to sign it as opposed to the board?
Right, and it's, it's, actually, it's a request from them, and it's a posi- it's a positive step. But they requested it, and, uh, it's, it's a good step. It, it's, it's to improve the ability for us to work together to do that.
All right, any, any other questions?
Just the last one, I'll, I'll mention that we're, uh, first agreement on the agenda that we're sending a, or signing an agreement, um, for mediation, uh, regarding a development, uh, proposal, um, that we've had pretty substantial hearings on, that, uh, the, the neighborhood and the, and the developer couldn't quite come to a understanding, so I, uh, we were, um, given the opportunity to invite both to mediate, which I think when you have a, uh, contentious hearing like that, um, perhaps mediation might be the way to find a, a compromise between the two parties, so I felt it was appropriate to, um, ask for that, and it looks like both sides have agreed, and it looks like we possibly have a retired judge to mediate that. Is that, is that correct?
I haven't read his resume, but I think that's who it is.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, his name is, is a retired judge.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the twelve agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Okay, thank you. Uh, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Very none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Motion carries. Is there any further business need to be brought before the board today? Very none?
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.